Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wednesday, March 8th, 2023 special Planning Board Work Session with various boards. If we could please first stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, first, just want to thank all you for taking the time out of your already busy schedules to meet with us to discuss the Underhill Farm Development. Special thanks, as always, to Tom in the back and all the town professional staff who make our jobs here so much easier and always go the extra mile. We thank you very much. I did get notice that there is going to be a member of the Housing Board here. We did not intentionally mean to box them out, but if there is a member here, if they want to let us know, we'll get you. How are you? If you want to grab a chair or someone in. First, I'm going to ask Jim Glotar, the Planning Attorney, just to give a brief description of where we are right now with the project.
Thank you, everyone. Where we are is back in 2002. The applicant filed an application of long-form environmental assessment form with the Planning Board. The Planning Board did some initial review and scheduled a public informational hearing. That hearing was held, I believe, in May of 2022. At that meeting, a lot of issues were raised, both by members of the Planning Board and by the public. The Planning Board spent a meeting sifting through the comments and compiled a list of issues for the applicant to address. The applicant went off, submitted some additional documents in January. They submitted a long-form EAF Part II, which identifies potentially significant impacts, and how they proposed to mitigate them. They also included a traffic study, an archaeological and historical resources study, and some wetland and infrastructure studies. At this point, the Planning Board has not made a determination whether the project, as proposed and as modified, will or will not have a significant impact on the environment. So no decision has been made as of yet as to whether a draft environmental impact statement is needed. After this meeting, the applicant may have some more work to do. They may come back to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board will ultimately hold a second public hearing. All right? That's all for now.
Thank you. Thank you. I just want to spell it here. Our goal today is to hear from each of the boards, get input. Then at the end, we're going to have a roundtable kind of discussion that I think will help. We truly believe everyone in this room wants what is best for the town and looking for responsible development. We're all confident that meetings like this and the process that we always follow will get us there. We have an agenda in front of us, so we'll call on each of the boards, ask them to make maximum five minutes, plus or minus presentation, but want to hear from you. We want to hear what the concerns are so that we can move forward with your issues. So first, we'll start with the Honorable Town Board Supervisor.
Thank you so much. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. This is an informational meeting. You won't be hearing much at all from us. This is for the Planning Board and the Planning Department and for you folks to get a little bit more information on what's going on, hopefully dispel any wrong facts. So continue, Mr. Fawn.
Thank you, sir. So first of all, the Conservation Board.
Hi, good evening. My name's Minnie Deneen-Carry. I'm a member of the Conservation Board, and I'll be reading a prepared statement from the Conservation Board. The Conservation Board's comments are predicated on information received at the last meeting with the applicant on June 1st, 2022. No new plans or information have been shared since our memo of June 3rd, 2022, in which we noted the following issues, which we would like to highlight now. Applicant representatives presented plans and described the wetlands on the site and their function and flow, along with preliminary mitigation for filling in wetlands and improving the pond. They established that the project would entail cutting approximately 520 trees to allow for the proposed development. The Conservation Board stated in a memo dated June 3rd, 2022, the following concerns. One, the Conservation Board is concerned about the amount of water that currently is held in these town wetlands, and how the additional flow from trees removal and altering the stream course will affect the pond. Two, wetlands A and B being intermittent could potentially be eupharal pools that fill up over the winter and dry up in the summer, supporting species of amphibians that do not utilize marshlands or ponds. The Conservation Board advises that the town environmental consultants review this concern. Three, the applicant should investigate a meandering approach of the stream into the pond to slow the water flow as it comes down the slope. Four, the applicant should provide a mitigation plan showing the location of the wetland buffers where it passes through the proposed housing. Five, an alternate site plan with no housing units in the wetland buffer should be developed. Six, a tree mitigation plan should be submitted. Seven, detailed drawings showing footpath interior to the site to access crossings to the northern part of the town should be shown. Lastly, electric charging stations for use by residents and retail customers should be included with the plans. The Underhill Farm property provides a feeling of open space and a green invitation into Yorktown's commercial center. The plan for Underhill Farms as presented adds many buildings, removing the park-like feel of the space. Beyond that memo dated June 3rd, 2022, the Conservation Board emphasizing the following comments. The applicant should explore, evaluate, and clarify the function and extent of wetlands A, B, and C identified in the report by Tim Miller Associates dated April 18th, 2022. The Conservation Board is concerned that not all the wetlands on the site were properly identified and flagged. The combination of extensive tree removal, increased impervious surfaces from the proposed units, parking areas, and paved roadways, some of which fall within the wetland buffer, raises great concern that the proposed mitigation will be inadequate to handle the potential impacts of this additional load. With much surface water flowing over the area, what is the impact to groundwater recharge of all the potential development? In addition, the proposed walls and channeling of the stream raise concerns that heavy rainfall events, the rush of water, will cause erosion and carry a heavy load of sediment and pollutants into the pond. The Conservation Board would like to see a mitigation plan with the stream following a meandering path, which would slow down the water flow and allow for capture of sediment before entering the pond. The Conservation Board would like to see that the units proposed within the wetland buffer be eliminated and alternate plans for the area surrounding the pond and buffer area be submitted. At this point, the plans do not adequately address the environmental impacts and could cause additional concerns. We feel this plan, as is, should not move forward.
Thank you very much. John, you back there?
Yep.
You want to talk about, I think our consultant met with the applicant's consultant, and I think they did redelineate the wetlands?
That's correct. Our consultant went out and reviewed the original initial wetland flagging, did not agree with it, and had a subsequent meeting with the applicant's environmental consultant. At the site meeting, they did agree with an amended flagging, which I believe is now on a map that we may have gotten within the last day or even today. So that's the status of that.
Okay, thank you. And we do have some of the applicant's professionals here and a podium set up, so you want to address any of the questions that they answered about the wetland functionality?
Good evening. Steve Marino, Tim Miller Associates. I'm the wetlands guy. To touch on the last point about the delineation, yes, in fact, I have met with the town's consultant on the site, and one of the smaller wetlands, Wetland A, was expanded due to standing water in that area on the day of the site visit. From a functional standpoint, I still believe that what we submitted to this point is still accurate, and I understand the Conservation Board's concerns about a functional analysis, so we will provide additional detail in terms of the functions of the existing wetlands on site. Just regarding the question of meandering the stream, and in the earlier plan that the Conservation Board saw back in June, it was our intention to move the stream, relocate it between a couple of the proposed buildings, and create a new stream channel at that time. However, since that time, the plans have been changed, and the original stream channel as it exists now will be left alone. So we have moved some buildings and shortened up a couple, a building, so that the impact of that, the existing stream out there is now off the table. So. And we have, as part of the expanded EAF, which it sounds like the Conservation Board hasn't received yet, which we submitted in the middle of January, and there is quite a bit more information regarding trees and the wetlands on site and mitigation, et cetera, that will bring you up to date as well.
Thank you very much. And the EF is in a draft form, right?
The EAF was submitted, of course, as a draft, and the Planning Board will deem whether or not it needs additional information or any amendments. And once that takes place, it will then be finalized and circulated to all interested and involved agencies.
And thank you very much for that well-done memo. Very detailed. Okay, next we have the Heritage Commission comments.
Before we get to that, I'd like to ask Steve a couple of questions.
Should ask the board upon us. Oh, I'm sorry.
When was your consultant out there reviewing the wetland delineations?
I don't remember the exact date. It was sometime in the last three or four weeks. The town's consultant met, went out. The town's consultant had originally gone out a couple of months ago, had some questions about the delineation, wanted to revisit it with me, so then I met her out there, and we went over it flag by flag at that time.
Well, did you review the entire site or just the areas that you initially selected or identified, rather?
I don't know whether she, I assume she looked at the entire site. She only had questions about the one wetland that we looked at when I went out there with her. She didn't ask to see any other parts of the site while I was with her.
Have we received a report from the wetlands consultant?
Without the final wetland delineation, which if we received it yesterday or today, no, they don't have it, and she's not going to release the report until that is part of her report.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, next onto Heritage. How are you?
I'm fine, Rich. How are you?
Sounds good, thanks.
We're going to be a tad over five minutes, so I hope you'll indulge us. Anyway, good evening and thank you. I'm Lynn Briggs, and I'm the chairman of the Yorktown Heritage Preservation Commission. To my left is fellow member Bridget Crowe, and to my right, Christine Sisler. Thank you for inviting us to this joint meeting with town leaders and the other commissions, and thank you for allowing us to discuss our issues in this open forum for the Underhill Farm Development Project. And we're grateful to you for agreeing to the need for an on-call historic resources consultant to address the issues that we've identified over the last year. So let me start with a little bit of organizational clarification. We are an official town commission under Chapter 198, Heritage Preservation, in our town code. Our role is to identify, authenticate, preserve, or save, and contrary to what some may think, we don't want to save every damn building in the town, but we want to create awareness to our robust heritage resources. And our role is also to collaborate with municipal leaders, the community, and the development community to identify practical, reasonable, cost-effective solutions to our preservation challenges, and certainly the Underhill Farm project is one. We are not the Yorktown Historical Society. It is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and is not an official part of the town government, but we do partner with the society and deliver a lot of programs about our history. So let's take a recap of what's at stake. The future of the historic Underhill Farm property. The 13.8 acre site is among the last major historically significant parcels in our community today. It is the former estate of one of the founding families of Yorktown, the Underhills. The entire property has been deemed eligible for listing on the state and national register of state and national register of historic places, excuse me, by the State Preservation Office, and the property meets four out of her five local landmarking criteria. The farmhouse and the Italianate mansion, outbuildings, parkland land, stone walls, pond, trees, and vegetation collectively retain period integrity to the property's past agricultural history and are surviving architectural and landscape anchors. And I think we all agree that the property contributes to community character and stands as a scenic gateway to the Yorktown Heights hamlet, a visual and aesthetic treasure to visitors and residents alike. As you know, we've submitted numerous memos to the Planning Board over the last year detailing our issues about the inadequacies of the developer studies. We are grateful that the studies and our comments are being reviewed by independent third-party objective historic resources consultants and specialists. So tonight, what we'd like to do is put the elephant in the room on the table and highlight the overriding issue that emerges from it. The elephant in the room is density. Unicorn has declared that in order for this development project to be viable, it has to build as many residential units as possible, plus commercial space, on the site to maximize the return on its financial investment. As a result, protecting the historic features of the Underhill Farm property has been ignored and severely compromised. Let me quote from the July 2021 Unicorn study titled "Alternatives Analysis." Reducing the overall scale of the project would significantly reduce the financial viability of the project and would prevent the community improvements from taking place. If the project were scaled down, it could not be completed. So now we can have a discussion about the so-called community benefits later, but here are a few examples of how Unicorn has failed to respect and preserve the Underhill Farm property historical significance. Number one, the developer has failed to resolve through a hard look, that is proof and evidence, that a potential significant Revolutionary War event in Yorktown may have involved the president of French General Rochambeau and several thousand French army troops encamping on the property and leaving a potential archaeological signature, as well as failed to resolve whether potential underground railroad activity occurred at the site. There are many documented genealogical and biological connections between the Underhills and the abolitionists, and when you consider the size of the estate, the railroad connection and proximity, period of time in history, existence of outbuildings, harboring freedom seekers could have occurred on the property, so we need to rule these potential occurrences in or out before disturbing the property. Number two, Unicorn has stated that none of the outbuildings was structurally viable, nor could they be adaptively reused and needed to be demolished, but failed to provide the, quote, "hard look evidence" to support these assertions. Instead, Unicorn solicited letters of endorsement to demolish all of the outbuildings from several town officials and others who did not have qualifying technical assessment skills. Number three, the developer failed to address the state's adverse effect finding determination. The criteria for an adverse effect finding is intensity of construction altering the setting and feeling of the property and planned demolition of the outbuildings. Unicorn declared that there were no scenarios that would be consistent with the project goals and retain the existing outbuildings. Number four, Unicorn failed to acknowledge the significance of the Underhill Farm as a cultural landscape and has not presented an integrated master plan that addresses the state's eligibility designation for the entire property, that is, the farmhouse, the mansion, outbuildings, park-like lawns, stone walls, entry gate, pond, flora, and fauna. Number five, the developer continues to change its plan for the main mansion. Initially, it was a private-public partnership and many things in between. Now it is 100% commercial, no proposed public use. Number six, Unicorn has failed to clarify how the architectural focal point, the main mansion, will be respected when surrounded by the intensity of a 40-foot-high, 11,000-square-foot mixed-use commercial and residential structure right next to it. And finally, Unicorn has failed to present a single alternative plan that does not severely compromise the property's historical significance. So in closing, we ask this question of the Planning Board, and it's one that many are wondering. How do you justify to the citizens of Yorktown destroying our shared history with 148 multifamily unit mixed-use residential development, with almost 18,000 square feet of commercial and retail space, while removing 523 trees and wiping out the scenic gateway to the hamlet in the process? Do you really want this to be your legacy? So Chairman Fawn, at the outset of the secret process, you indicated that traffic wetlands, historic and density, were the focus of your board and the developer. It's not too late to address historic and density. So let's all sit down and figure this out, partner, collaborate, and work together, and build a community solution that meets all of our needs, a special place of pride that all of us can say, "I helped preserve our shared history." So why don't we start by asking ourselves these questions? Do we really need to disturb, destroy, and excavate 11 of the 13-point acres of this historic property? Do we need to demolish 523 protracted trees of the 703 total? That's three-quarters of the trees. Do we really need to build 148 residential units? How about 75 or half? Do we need to destroy all of the outbuildings? Can one or two or three of these be repurposed on the site design plan? Do we need another park in the hamlet? There are two now. Do we need another commercial building? Is there demand for more office space given the commercial vacancies? Do we need to replace the scenic gateway to the hamlet with the dense mixed-use residential complex? And finally, do we need to concurrently disturb the quiet enjoyment of the neighborhood residents for years to come? We understand this is a private property, and the development must make money, but it is also our shared history. And given that our town motto is progress with preservation, if we put our collective minds to it, we can achieve both, the economics and the historic. If the Planning Board is committed to address historic and density, please require the developer to submit alternate development plans, reducing the density, eliminating the commercial use, relocating reciting structures, or even lowering the heights of building profiles. Set an example for our residents. Demonstrate that we can come together in support of a collaborative solution for this historic property for current and future generations of Yorktowners. Thank you for listening and considering our feedback. I yield back.
Thank you very much. John, where do we stand with the historic view of the consultant?
The historic consultant is under contract with the town, has submitted a proposal to review the application, and has been authorized to proceed and is now proceeding on that track.
So do we have any anticipation when we hear back from them?
Probably in about two weeks from now.
Okay. So that's in the works. And again, thank you very much to the Town Board for, I mean, that's the first time that was done, the real historic look at a piece of property, and certainly a very sensitive one. So as soon as we hear back from them, I'm sure we'll be meeting with you guys again.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next we have the Recreation Commission.
How's everybody doing tonight? PJ Kaminsky, the vice chair, to my left, Chairman Matt Talbert, Tom Dunn, Joe Falcone. Other members that are not here, please don't expect that they are not as fervent as we are about this topic. So I feel a little bit unprepared for class after the first two groups, but I don't have a written statement. I'm not going to be reading it, kind of fly from the cuff most of my time. But one thing I will read is the memo that we sent to the Town Board on May 10th, 2021, as relates to this law, and I'm just going to read the one section that is important to me. While Section 300-251.D is clear that it states that the recreation requirements as set forth within this chapter in the Yorktown Town Code shall remain applicable to the provisions of this article, there is still a level of uncertainty, if not ambiguity, introduced elsewhere in this legislation. To be more specific, Section 300-255.h and 300-256.h, for both Yorktown Heights and Lake Osceola Development Overlay Zones, state, "The required recreation for multifamily units built within the mixed-use development projects shall be as required in the R3 Zone, except that the Planning Board may modify this requirement due to special circumstances of a particular site and the proximity of the site to a nearby public recreation. It is this latter wording of this section that is troublesome, as it could eventually result in a potential waiver of the recreational requirements that were thought to be clarified in Section 300-251.D." So the reason why I read that, that was the Parks and Rec Commission memo to the Town Board before the legislation was passed. Nothing was changed in that legislation. So I understand and I totally respect everything you guys do. I could never do what you guys do. But I'm here to say that we understand the recreational requirement to mean that there is 148 units at $4,000 a unit. There's $592,000 of potential recreational fees. That is a value that we would expect. As people that have heard and read and everything else, and anybody that listens to us, because I'll say it to a mosquito with ears, the Recreation Commission right now is in dire straits for funds to repair our parks. We have incredible assets in this town. It's one of the things that draw people to this town. And unfortunately, some of them are getting old, and some of them need repair. Some of them need, can't use recreational fees for upkeep, but some of us, some of you have seen what we have done recently with repurposing some of our parks for other areas. You've seen what we've been able to do with Granite Knolls. We've constructed one of the premier recreational facilities for sports in the county, if not the state. So there is a lot more to do, and we have a lot of park property right now that is sitting as just that property. And we also have facilities that need to be inspected and need to be repaired, if not flagged for being unsafe, because the equipment inside these facilities is very old. So we are more than willing to work with the developer and work with the Planning Board, but we expect $592,000 of value. That's it.
Thank you very much.
This is a question for the applicant, actually. Your plans have always included the concept of public recreation on-site around the pond area. Is that idea exclusive of an additional recreation fee component that was just mentioned, or is that something that's in addition to it?
Better into my sleeve than the microphone. Good evening. My name is Mark Blanchard from Blanchard &amp; Wilson LLP. I'm the attorney for the project. Mr. Bach, to answer your question, we are expecting to offer that park with the public ass, I'm sorry, access in lieu of, or in replacement of, the fee requirement on the code.
I just wanted to make sure that that is clear in terms of where your proposal is at right now. Thank you.
Yes.
And if you could hang on one second. There's also, part of this project is parking for a proposed building that's on an adjacent site. And so can you explain how that's going to work?
Sure, that's correct. That's a great point. Thank you for raising that. On the adjacent residential development, the Beaver Ridge property, we, there is a proposed senior center that is going to be constructed. However, there's no room on that parcel for the parking to support the senior center. We have offered to make the parking available on our site so that that senior center is viable. So working in conjunction with the town and the adjacent owner, with our contribution, that senior center can become a real concept.
Are you guys involved with the building of the actual structure?
No, 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 no. That is not on our property. It's, we would be providing the parking.
Okay. And we'll come back. Thank you, Pat. And then we're going to add the Housing Board.
And, Mr. Fawn, I just noticed Ken Belfer is here.
Yeah, if you want to come on up. We do have a... This was Tom's great fear, not enough microphones. How are you?
Good, thank you. Ken Belfer, Chair of the Community Housing Board, and not here to comment on all the technical aspects of the project that the other boards are very qualified to do. are very qualified to do. And I understand that the developer is looking for the best way for him to get a return on his investment in the property. But it's our task to, as a town board and as all of the advisory boards, to figure out what's really best for the town and what best meets the needs of the town. I'll limit my comment to the area of housing, which is what we look at. And what, a question that came up was the use of the term senior-friendly about the units. And we had asked earlier and was hoping that would be included in some of the reports exactly what that meant. We felt that that could be very confusing as a concept, because as far as we know, we're not talking about age-restricted housing that would be dedicated for seniors here. And so I'm not sure what senior-friendly means. Yes, there's a need for senior housing in the town, but I think there's also a need for housing for families. I think there's a need for young, single folks coming back after college. And for, and at the other end of the spectrum, for people downsizing after they become empty nesters. And for young families, and I think it's been recognized in the whole Westchester area that there's a whole demographic of young families that doesn't seem to be staying, partly because of housing costs. In terms of what meets some of those needs, it's not luxury housing all the time. There's certainly a demand for that. That's certainly very profitable, as long as there's a demand for that. But, you know, less expensive housing is what the majority of people can afford. And one of the ways that you deal with that is what's the size of the units that are being proposed, not only, you know, in square feet, but in number of bedrooms? So if we're talking about housing for, for single people, studio apartments is one type of housing that can be very important for that population as an affordable type of housing unit. So I think that whole issue of what are the housing needs of the demographic that lives in the Town of Yorktown, both age and income levels, and I think just needs to be considered as part of this. I think there are communities in the County of Westchester that require a certain number of units to be set aside as affordable. We would love to see that. There's no town legislative requirement that mandates that, but there's no, this used to be required by the planning board as part of its site plan approvals in Yorktown, and I believe you have the authority to do that should you choose. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So I'm going to just go through what we kind of heard, and I'm going to ask some questions to the applicant, and then afterwards, we'll go back around, like a round table. First, I just, to the, to the town board and to John Tegger, the affordable housing situation, and I know the governor now is making all kinds of possible changes to the law. Where does the town stand right now with affordable housing? I think we're, are we compliant with what they previously?
Actually, Ken Belfer could probably answer that more succinctly than I could. So I would defer to him. He's, he's the keeper along with the housing board of our, our affordable housing stock, and I think he knows other stock that qualifies under the county's quota. So I think he can give you those numbers better than I can.
I'm not prepared to give particular numbers tonight, but first of all, let me say that the overlay zone as a concept is, is basically complying with the spirit of a lot of, you know, housing policy, including some of what's been proposed by Governor Hochul. Now, there's no housing legislation right now. There's a lot of misinformation out, you know, about this. Hochul made comments as part of her budget presentation, but there is no mandate right now. Now, what may come about remains to be a question. Obviously, there's been strong pushback on the issue of home rule, and we're all here because we have home rule and have a say in what happens within our community. But, you know, some of the concepts that are being discussed, you know, in Hochul's proposal are the concept of putting density near major transportation areas. We don't have a train station here in Yorktown. We have a bicycle and walking trail where there once was. So there are, there are certain things that don't apply, but the concept of having more diversity of housing types in your commercial hamlet centers is a principle that's part of what the governor's looking for, and that's always been something encouraged by the county, and that's encouraged in our own comprehensive plan. In terms of affordable housing, there's no specific requirement. There's no specific number of units that's being imposed upon the Town of Yorktown at this time, their recommendations. The county commissioned a housing needs study a couple of years ago, and as part of that study, they did a housing needs report for the Town of Yorktown, and they recommend a fairly substantial number of affordable housing units to be built in every community around Westchester. But that, at this stage, is a recommendation and not a mandate. So I really can't respond with a specific and say, we have to produce X units, and we have or haven't done that, because there's no such mandate at this time.
So the recommendation that we increase is kind of, it's out there, but there's no number?
Well, once again, I don't know whose recommendation you're talking about.
Counties you're talking about, the prior.
Okay. I believe there is a number in their housing needs assessment, and I can send you that number. I don't know it off the top of my head. It's a recommendation and not a requirement.
I appreciate that. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Just a quick question. So as the housing, Yorktown Housing Commission, do you have recommendations as to what else should be added to this property? Because as I understand it, there's town homes, there's condominiums, there's apartments for rent. So it's a fairly diversified property in terms of the opportunities for people to live there, to choose to own or rent or what have you. What other recommendations would you all make to improve the plan?
So I agree with you that I think this brings diversity of housing, and therefore, it's very important from that point of view. I mentioned unit sizes, such as studio apartments. I think, you know, that, the unit mix should be looked at. And from a housing point of view, our board would love to see a percent of units be mandated as affordable, such as 10%. And that could be under the town's program, it could be under the county's program, but that would be what we think would, would best serve the interests of the community.
Thank you. Yep. Oh. Ken, I wanted to clarify, you made a statement towards the end of your comments about the planning board could set certain, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I want to clarify what you said, if you could. Your suggestion, I think, was that the board could set certain numbers or requirements in front of the developer for affordable housing. Could you expand on that? Because maybe I have a, or we have a different version of what we can and cannot do at this point.
So, I mean, I've read a legal opinion about that. Obviously, you'd want to get your own, you know, legal opinion. If we go back historically in the Town of Yorktown, and Aaron Bach will remember this well, I think.
I would remember it well as...
Okay.
I was on the board at the time, so...
Okay. That, you know, starting in 1988, it became the policy of the Town of Yorktown to encourage the inclusion of affordable housing in developments. There was something similar in a, in a way to the recreation fees, where developers were encouraged to include affordable housing onsite, or in lieu of that, pay a fee into an affordable housing trust fund, which still exists.
Right.
And the encouragement of developers happened both by the town board in zoning decisions and by the planning board in their site plan approvals. And, and in that way, a number of developments, and I can, you know, Strawberry Meadows, Blackberry Woods, Wildwood, all contributed affordable housing units. And that was part of the final decisions by the town board or the planning board.
Is it your understanding that, that we still have the ability to do that? Is that plan, in your mind, still, still functional?
As far as I know, nothing has changed in the law regarding that. One of the bases for that was the right to review impact on affordability under SEACRA.
Hmm. Yeah, no, okay. I'm just trying to get a clarification of what your understanding was, not looking for you to cite me the law, but I just wanted to see if we're on the same page in terms of what you're suggesting.
John Nolan, from the Pace Land Use Law Center, had published a whole kind of guide on the legal background for mandating affordable housing as part of housing developments.
And could you just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Question then for me is, is the record that's before us right now from the applicant, does that sufficiently, in your mind, address the impacts of this project on the housing stock in Yorktown, either positively or negatively, in light of what you just said, that we can consider affordability?
I don't think it addresses it at all.
Okay.
My, one point of clarification myself, affordable housing is a term that means a lot of things to a lot of different people, and people have connotations of what it might mean and so forth. Can you describe what that would mean in a, in a development like this? What affordable housing would be and how it would be managed?
So if we're talking not about diversity of housing, you know, and diversity of prices and diversity of types of units for sale and rental, but affordable housing as an official thing, it's generally something that comes with deed restrictions on the properties that set what the maximum rents or sale prices can be, and set what the maximum eligible, income eligibility would be of a renter or an owner. And typically, what's used is 60% of the area median income as the income eligibility, and 80% of the area median income as the eligibility for for-sale units. And then they calculate backwards from that what the actual, you know, maximum affordable rent would be, or maximum resale price. Yorktown just passed revisions to Section 339, our own affordable housing law, so that specifies out in detail what affordable housing is that comes under Yorktown's own program. And 60% of area median income and 80% apply, as well as the formulas for calculating rent and sales prices.
A lot of information. Does someone from the group want to talk about the senior-friendly term?
Again, Mark Blanchard, project attorney. So the senior affordable is a blend of, the concept for the senior affordable is a blend of the current marking need with design and with marketing. We're not coming forward asking for any town legislation to designate us specifically under your zoning code as a senior designated, and we're also sensitive to any state or local requirements, I'm sorry, state or federal housing requirements, when you're, when you're putting up property for sale. We're going to meet all state and federal requirements as to opportunities and accessibility. What you had touched on earlier, sir, is talking about the size of the unit that makes it attractive to the market that is downsizing, certain amenities within a unit, for example, the ability to add an elevator to a unit, the number of bedrooms to the unit. So we have, our plan is to set aside at least 55 units in compliance with federal and state law to make it attractive and marketing toward this senior-focused housing. And we believe, and part of that is with the existing housing stock and the existing market needs, where people are residing in homes that are simply desirable now, they don't want to be there as empty nesters, so they're moving into our product that we're bringing to market. That's how we're going to be satisfying that issue. And the other question, I would just say, in terms of the affordable housing, the, we have a different opinion, I have a different opinion with their town code relating to the planning board's jurisdiction to impose a housing number. And affordable housing set aside is normally adopted through the legislative process and is, that's, that's a different animal than what we're talking about here in Yorktown. Sorry to get off topic.
Right. While you're up there, the one thing that kind of transcended everything was the density. That, I think everybody hit on that. So the density of the development, I know you guys looked at the surrounding areas.
Right. That's been a part of our submission from the beginning, is at least three projects around us that we are, are at or less than existing projects.
Can you talk about that? So in particular, the other developments around you, how do you guys compare to them in respect to...
Well, we do not exceed anyone that's around us. We do it by, I don't have, I wish I had that chart in front of me, but we do, you do it by per acre. Oh, yes, thank you. Thanks, Steve.
He's got it in his pocket.
So as part of our EAF submission, I'll just hold it up. This is our, this is our surrounding density map. We do basically like a unit per acre calculation, and we are, we are below, we're close, but we're below every, the one, two, three projects that are, I'm sorry. Right, we have, there's a project to the north of us, 20 units per acre is possible. The Beaver Ridge, the Beaver Ridge project is 19 units per acre is possible or being constructed. The Rochambeau is 9.6 units, and we're coming in at 10.7. So we're right in the middle of the, of existing density. So we are not exceeding any project that is around us. We are in line with, one of the things that you do under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEACRA, is you look at existing neighborhood conditions and whether or not you're changing neighborhood conditions, whether or not you're changing a neighborhood character. And since we are in line with three, three dense projects all adjacent to us, we are not changing the character, we are fitting in with existing density.
Okay. Any other questions for him while he's up there?
We'll wait and then...
The rest of... No, we hit all the boards. Oh, this is just their comments, yeah. So we did, the board was back out onsite this weekend, and this time, we did get a tour of the main structure. It is quite incredible. Everything that you said that you thought it was and could be, it is. I mean, I walked out of there, I was amazed. It really is something else. And I heard that, I think the developer has changed their tune about what that building is going to be, or, and I've, you know, I've heard the possibility of restaurant and other things in there. But this, at this point, I believe that streetscape, from what we've seen, and the structure itself, is going to remain intact. Yeah, if you could. Might as well stay up there.
So we have two different things happening here relating to that main mansion, the main house, if you will. You're identifying a big issue is internally, how are we going to use that house? What use is going to be applied? That remains open as we're going through the approval process. What remains unchanged from day one is that that house is going to be preserved, right? We had a concept of maybe municipal offices going in there, there was a concept of a restaurant, maybe a bed and breakfast. These concepts are being developed, but all within the context of the mansion, I'm sorry, the main house, staying intact and being adaptively reused. We've been transparent about that from the beginning, and that has not changed. That would be a major shift in all the studies that we are presenting relating to the EAF, especially the Historical Commission, the State Historical Preservation. If we are turned to take that main house down, that would shift a lot of our analysis so far through the planning board. So it's use and preservation. Adaptive reuse is happening. What's going in there? We're still working with the town to figure that out.
So the structure itself is going to be renovated to its historic... So the structure itself is going to be renovated to its historic integrity and not damaged from the outside at all?
Correct, absolutely.
And the walls surrounding the property are staying, the gate is staying, I recall, the back area?
Well, the, yeah, yes, especially the Underhill, this intersection diagonally across from us, that beautiful stone wall and the gate, that's all being preserved.
So we drive up, and I think that's a big concern because it's the campus itself, the entire campus they're concerned about. As we drive up Underhill, we look to the right, that view shed will remain the same?
Absolutely. We're sensitive to our position as a gateway into the downtown. You know, we don't, we're not putting dense monolithic building on the corner, we're preserving that view, Rich, as you described, Mr. Chairman, as you're coming up the street onto the right, that, that view of open space will remain.
Anything at this point? I wanted to ask John for an update of where the state review of that property is from a historical point of view.
The state review has been essentially completed probably close to a year ago. They did go through reviewing it for eligibility for landmarking, which they confirmed. Then they worked with the applicant on their alternative analysis and accepted the applicant's proposal, and they produced a draft letter of resolution which has a number of requirements that the state would like to see in order for the project to move forward in the manner that was discussed with the applicant. That letter of resolution is yet to be executed by either the state or the town, but it is, has been essentially resolved by the state in terms of where this project should go, what should be preserved on the site relative to the application. And it is awaiting the conclusion of the public input part of this process for that letter of resolution to be executed.
I'm a little confused. In that resolution that's yet to be adopted on either side, are there requirements in there that this board needs to be aware of as we move forward?
Yes, the letter of resolution and the requirements that are in there should be part of your, your own resolution in terms of, you know, conditions.
But I mean--
So it is, essentially, it's keeping the main house--
Right.
Maintaining to the greatest extent practical some of the landscaping that is, you know, lends the historic feeling to it, keeping an open area around the pond. Those are the highlights. I think there's a couple more, but that is essentially what the requirements are.
I'm just wondering how specific it gets, is kind of where I'm going with this.
It's, it's not detailed specific, but it is broad specific in terms of preserve the main house and maintain it, maintain the feel of the landscape as much as is practicable, you know, maintain the integrity of the pond and the surrounding area of the pond, things like that. So it's not detailed in terms of you must do it for a number of feet, or you must keep this number of trees. It's more of a subject, you have some subjectivity in it in terms of what will happen in the end.
May I add, if I could add a comment to what John was saying, the current plan that's in front of you, that we have submitted, revised and submitted, that's being supported by the EAF, is fully in line with that state letter. So nothing, it's not as if that state letter, the resolution gets signed and executed, and then we have to take things off of our plan. Our plan is fully compliant with what the state is contemplating.
I think what I, myself as one board member, we're looking to give the applicant a clear direction of what this board sees as a solution for renovating that building. Because there was a reference that it was Italianate in design, I don't know where that determination came from, or even if it's accurate, but I think that you need clear definition as to what this board and this town expects that building to be when it's renovated. And I think there, there's conflicting styles of architecture in that building, so I think we need to come to some conclusion as to what we are expecting and what you're agreeing to do.
Well, and I think the town took a very positive step when it hired the third-party consultant to review our report. And I think a lot of that clarity you have identified, what we're waiting for, will happen in that process.
Okay. And with these outbuildings, which we discussed, to the possibility of possibly taking them and moving them, or, so when we did our tour this weekend, we went into a lot of those outbuildings, and a lot of them do seem like they've been heavily renovated. When we get this consultant, they're going to dig in the weeds on that, right?
Their first task is to review the applicant's, the application, the record of the application. It's possible that they will need to go forward and do a little bit more investigation in that regard, but we have to wait and see what they, how they, how they view what's in the record to date.
So when they review the application and some of these other concerns or questions that came up, like the Underground Railroad and some kind of revolutionary-- encampment or something taking place there, are they going to at some point look into that?
If we, if we request them to, they will.
Okay. All right. Because, you know, the buildings themselves, if they're in the location of something that is to be built, possibly be built, you know, I don't know if the bones of the building can be removed and brought somewhere else, it didn't look like there was, but that's yet to be determined. All right, anything on the historic?
Yeah, I was just wondering, when you posed the issue of the Revolutionary War possibility and the involvement possible with the Underground Railroad, how do you propose to handle that issue so that you can say definitively, yes, there was some involvement, or no, there's nothing to preserve? I mean, is, is the work that the consultant is going to do, are they going to do that? What would you like to see done in order to answer that question?
Thank you, that's an excellent question, Erin. With regard to whether or not there are any encampments on the property, what needs to be done to definitively make a conclusion about that is to do a deed search, okay, with regard to the property and determine whether or not the encampment, when you fold back the properties, if we start with the current owner and we peel it back and we, and over time, generally speaking, the property sizes get bigger and bigger. So what you want to do is peel the deeds back and determine, when we get back to Abraham Underhill, determine how many acres he had. And then, working with the Berthier maps, which are the definitive maps that were available during the Revolutionary War, we have the GIS coordinates for those, and we can then determine whether or not the encampment was on the property. So we know where those encampments are, and if we peel the deeds back, we can determine if indeed the property was on, or the encampment was on that property. So it's a definitive deed search is how you do this, tying it to a GIS coordinates for the, where the encampments are located. So it's working with an archaeologist and doing a deed search.
You figure out the extent of the property at that period of time--
Yeah.
And see if it match, that description matches where the encampment description was.
Yep.
I thought, okay, I didn't realize that would be the approach, I thought you had to go out and like excavate--
No, no, no.
Dig and see what else is going on out there.
Encampments are indicated on a deed? Or are you just looking at--
No, no. What I'm saying is the encampments have been identified by Rochambeau's mapmaker, okay, cartographer back in the day. So we have all of those. We also know, can take those and convert those to GIS coordinates and figure out where they are, and then based on where they are, we say, all right, let's do the deed searches that, that tie to those GIS coordinates, and peel it back and determine was an encampment on the property back in the day? And as we've researched it back in the day, Abraham owned about 330 acres. If you peel that back from where we believe the encampments are, it suggests that the encampment was on the property back in the day.
On this property?
On this property.
So could it have been on Beaver Ridge property?
Standing the 300 acres extend.
Not that, no, it, back, back in the day, we, we believed the encampment, one of the encampments was on this property. It suggests that definitive factual finding.
So Lynn, could it be that, I'm just curious--
Yeah.
Because, you know, I like this stuff, but could an encampment have been on where Beaver Ridge is currently? Property he probably owned--
It's possible, okay, it's possible. I will say that archaeological value up in the northwest corner of the property, because it's closest to some of the encampments, there could be some signature archaeological value, but that's what we have to rule in or rule out before we disturb the land, okay?
I have just a couple of quick updates--
Wait, wait, wait. The other question is, what do you, is that the same approach you take for the Underground Railroad?
No, that, trying to determine whether there's Underground Railroad activity takes experts who know how to locate that. That is somebody doing a visual inspection, because most of the Freedom Seekers, if you will, were hidden in outbuildings and shacks and stuff. They weren't in the main mansion, so we'll need somebody to help us who has expertise in that, and there are many people out there who do have that expertise. But since this property had a number--
There's nothing other than speculation at this point that you're working with?
But--
Is that true?
It's, let me just say this, we have made a number of, so far, okay, we're not done, but we have connected the Underhills to a number of abolitionists, okay? And so it just, we may peel it back, we may find there were, we may find that there weren't, okay, that's a possibility. But it's working with people who have expertise in this and looking for those buildings, if you will, nooks and crannies where they hid the Freedom Seekers. So that's how that would be done. It's different than what would be done with regard to the encampment research.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just have a couple of quick points of update, and this relates really to the draft EAF, which is still being worked on and which we will, you know, add to as we move forward after this meeting. And I don't, I will not speak for Beth Selig, our cultural resource specialist, because, and so my understanding, she's going to be at the meeting on Monday night, so there can be additional information. But the draft of the EAF as it stands now does include information on the likelihood of, of the Rochambeau encampment being on the property. It includes information regarding the Underground Railroad concept, and I just wanted to point out also that as part of the initial studies on the site, almost 200 test holes were dug on the property and within all the limits of the proposed disturbance. So there's no part of the site that's been untouched by the initial test holes, and there's a record in those reports that were submitted as to what was found in each of those test holes. And there wasn't anything found in that, in that on-the-site reconnaissance that indicated any, anything related to the Rochambeau encampment. But there's other information available as well, and Beth will be better able to speak to that and to working with the town's consultant in resolving that issue.
Rich--
Wanted to get that out there.
Sorry. Based on our review of the study, 45, they said they were going to dig, I don't know, 240 if I'm not mistaken digs, okay? Only 45% of those were dug, and only three were dug in the northwest corner, which is the area that we have concerns about. There may be archaeological value there.
The information I have is that 240 were proposed, 65 were not done because they were under asphalt, under impervious surfaces, and that's why they weren't done. I don't have any information about 45% or anything like that. But again, I don't want to, I don't want to speak--
Do the math on the numbers, that's what it is.
I don't want to speak for our specialist or the town specialist, so that can be clarified.
Again, we're here to--
Sure.
--get questions, so we can try to get answers.
Yep.
So that's a great question. Good? Don't run away just yet, I'm sorry.
We got more.
Did we comment on the LOR, Letter of Resolution, for a minute before we go on? That letter of resolution was developed by the developer, okay? And it was created before the applicant became approved under the Design District Overlay Law. And back in the day, there were 165 units, now there are 148, and a lot of changes have been discussed relative to the property. So the LOR, from our perspective, needs to include architectural standards, defining features, what's in, what's out, and so there's a whole lot of clarity, we believe, needs to be included in that LOR. And in our mind, based on talking to the state, it's still open, and the state is waiting for us to get through all the public hearings and get all the public feedback before they finalize it. So it's, it's an open document, it was created by the developer, and, and there's a lot that needs to be paused on until it's finalized, okay?
So that process, it wasn't, it's not something like we have, we didn't develop it on our own and just send a signature page to the state. I mean, this was developed in conjunction with the state representatives. It is developed, there are narratives and drafts that went back and forth. Procedurally, under SEACRA, the state waits until the final, finality from the planning board before it executes that letter. So there, our position is that there is no more clarity that's needed, the state has signed off on it, it's ready to go, but during the secret process, it has to wait to the proper time for it to be executed.
Well, what's the point of additional secret review of that if it's not going to affect the letter, or it may not?
There's no additional review at this point needed from the state. We, we think it's--
They're waiting for this process to take place.
Correct.
Which is where we are, right? We don't know necessarily everything we need to know yet.
I know.
So they're not going to sign something prematurely, would be my, that's how I understood it. But they're comfortable with what it is now.
It was signed by Mr. Galero on January 22nd, '22, so it's been a while, and it was before this applicant was approved in this process. So I think we need to pause and really talk to the state and determine whether or not it's still open or not.
Well, I think too, I think it's important, thank you, I want to get Matt Tom out of me. Once we get this consultant, obviously, I'm sure their scope will work as they dig into this is going to change, right? Just like the wetlands has changed, which I want to talk about next, quickly. So when we went out this weekend, we talked about that fire road that kind of broke through the property, and I know we've been talking about this, this drainage area, this culvert under the, under the road, and I think there was possibly going to be some looking at that this week. How much of an impact do you think that road, when the other development was done, impacted this site? And the lack of maintenance on that? And what, and, you know, along with what the conservation board's looking for, the functionality of this wetland, and, I mean, how do you, how do you deal with that? Because I know Aaron went out, and there were some other areas that were wet and ponding and, yep, all right, why don't you do that?
On Saturday morning, after we spent some time in the meeting in the mansion house, I went out and walked the entire site. Took me a little over an hour, and I took a bunch of pictures. I don't know if we can put the drawing up there that shows the wetlands in those orange spots, or if we're not prepared to do that tonight, just so people can see what we're talking about. But there were two small wetlands that were identified in this application as discrete, non-connected ponds, you know, small bodies of water. And when I was out there over the weekend, those bodies of water were connected. The whole area in between the two was, was wet, there was water flowing in different drainages through there, that's number one that I saw. Conservation Board has identified the inadequacies of, possible inadequacies of the wetland delineation, and I saw it for myself on Saturday. In addition, just talking about the stream that Rich referenced, which is coming from the Glen Rock Street side of the property and flowing down on 118, you know, on the 118 side, which would be the south side of the property, one channel was shown on the map, I saw at least two that were coming in from different directions and then meeting just north of one of the ponds, I'm sorry, just west of one of the ponds, and then continuing out. So whatever culvert is there is not, in my mind, contributing to the entire wet area. There's, there's fragmities, considerable amount of fragmities in there. Just, for me, it raises an issue which has been raised as to the adequacy of the delineations, and how much water are we really dealing with on that site? Not just, you know, runoff and drainage and surface weather, a lot of construction is taking place in those wet areas that are there now. And I think it's a concern, and we need to keep that issue in mind as we go forward as one that needs more work and more study. And that just goes back to what our town attorney said to us at the beginning. One of the primary reasons we're doing this meeting tonight is to focus on issues that still need review, to see if they are adequately dealt with, or if there are going to be unavoidable impacts to this project that we have to consider. That's why we want, we gather everyone together tonight with your own expertise to bring to us and to help us with that.
I can respond briefly, or I can exp, and you know, once, the planning board knows that once I get started talking about wetlands, I can go on for several hours, and I won't do that. I'll, I'll take the brief approach. What Mr. Box says is certainly true, generally, we don't flag wetlands in February or early March, it's the wettest time of the-- It's the wettest time of year. It's not an indication necessarily of the hydrology and vegetation that you need to determine if an area is regulated wetland or not. I can tell you again that I walked the site with the town's consultant. We did add a small area of wetland to one of the already flagged areas, and, you know, she will be receiving that map, and it's my expectation that she'll sign off on that map as being an accurate representation of where the wetland, regulated wetlands on the site are currently located. Mr. Box referred to a second channel. There is a swale, a runoff swale, that comes from essentially the corner of Glen Rock and Underhill, a little onto the site, not exactly at the corner, and that has been delineated as well and is now included on the updated plans. Regarding the wetlands and the function of the wetlands, it's my, it's my analysis and my conclusion that the wetlands on the north side, on the west side of that fire access road to Beaver Ridge were essentially created when that road was created. Those are borrow pit areas where soils were excavated from there to create a level road through the property and onto the Beaver Ridge property. And by doing that, A, excavated to a soil depth where the soils are compacted and hold water. If you, when we do the soils analysis out there, there's no topsoil in those areas because that's, that topsoil's all been stripped, so all it's left with is a hard pan underneath that holds water. And occasionally, in the summertime, drains off. But it's not a naturally occurring wetland, it doesn't have naturally occurring wetland soils in that area. So those two wetlands, A and B, fall into, I believe it's A and B, fall into that category. The third wetland that we're talking about is the, essentially what comes from the corner, again, from a drainage pipe in the corner of Glen Rock and Underhill, drains under Glen Rock, onto the property. Drains onto the property, first heads north for a little while, then makes a hard right down the hill, eventually ending up in the pond. When that fire road was installed, there was a culvert put under there to capture that flow as it came and to go underneath the road and eventually into the pond. With lack of maintenance over the years, that, the uphill side, the upgradient side of that culvert has been clogged and blocked, so now water no longer flows in a channel under that, through that pipe. It now sits on the west side of the, of the road and pools there, and that's where the phragmities predominantly that Mr. Box saw out there, that's where that phragmities is. So the intention was to see if that culvert could be cleared and what would happen with routine maintenance of an existing culvert as to what that would do. It really involves that, a small area just to the west of the road that we expect to drain. Anything, once you get further to the west from there, is a deep inside channel that goes up to Glen Rock, and then, like I say, makes a, heads south to where the culvert enters the property. So from a functional standpoint, I can certainly break that down further, but it's, again, in my opinion, it's not, none of this is a naturally occurring wetland. It's our belief that the pond was excavated sometime in the early 1900s from an existing wetland that was on the property, because again, clearly water flows down that, the hill towards this property. And indications from early USGS mapping from the 1890s didn't show a pond on the property at that time. The pond shows up on 1936 mapping, so we know that as of 1936, it was there. It's unclear when it was exactly excavated, but that's our expectation, is it was excavated sometime in the early 1900s to create that ice pond, essentially.
I just, now that the map is up there, I just want to point out to you that there was extensive areas of phragmities, standing water and running water up where the northernmost four buildings are sited. So this is an issue that our expert is going to have to come in on and help us resolve, okay?
Like I said, again, my expectation is that she's been out there as well. Phragmities isn't always an indication of a regulated wetland. Phragmities will grow anywhere where there's a lot of disturbance. The areas closest to Glen Rock Road, as you go further north, get direct runoff from the road. Any sand, gravel, anything that's put on the road during the wintertime, anything that may runoff of properties further to the west or further up Glen Rock will end up in these little drainage areas that, right off the road, sand and gravel is prime territory for phragmities to get established in. So it's not necessarily a wetland plant in that kind of a situation.
All right.
But we certainly can talk more about that.
Yes, I'm not here to debate you. What I'm here to do is identify areas of issues that we need to work on further. The other big issue that comes to my mind on this property is you've got little orange wetlands over here, but the buffer around them, which our town code requires us to consider is 100 feet from those areas, and that encompasses a large part of the lower left-hand corner of the property. I'm just raising that as an issue for us, that we need to consider that as well, because as the Conservation Board mentioned earlier, there's a lot of water coming down through there, and it needs to be handled right so that it doesn't flood the very people that we want to put there and the very improvements we want to make. I'm not sure...
Don't you think if the water was managed right, correctly, those wetlands wouldn't even be there?
That's possible, but our town code talks about...
I mean, they're there, so it's a reality.
Wetlands, wetlands and water bodies, whether man-made or not, need to be considered.
Right.
Joe, can I ask a question? I know you feel left out.
Good to stretch your legs.
Good evening, Joseph Rina from Site to Site.
The Beaver Hill Development.
Yes.
When was that?
Late 70s.
Late 70s?
Yeah.
So before your time working in town?
Yes, it was.
Is there any...
The Wild West, we had no rules, no regulations.
Are there any plans of that development and what that was intended to look like?
I believe, on the side of that development that borders Route 118, I believe there is a stormwater basin. It might be overgrown or whatnot, but I believe there is a stormwater basin in that area for when that was built.
All right, so if, like we're talking about here, I think we have to look at the original intent, if that's possible to do.
And this, this project that we're proposing will be required to comply with the New York State D.C. general permit for stormwater discharge, which is overseen by the MS4, which is the town of Yorktown, as well as, we're in the New York City watershed, so we're going to have to deal with getting permits from the New York City watershed. We've already done quite a bit of work moving towards that. We've done testing, we've done preliminary designs, we'll be doing, so we're going to, we're going to be required to do runoff reduction, green infrastructure, and standard practices to deal with the stormwater. We will be, a significant amount of the stormwater we're going to be dealing with is going to be recharged through infiltrators, so it will be treated first from a water quality point of view, and then it will be recharged into the ground.
Is something like that going to work if you have wet areas?
Well, that wet area, again, is kind of isolated because it's on that west side of that emergency access road, where all our infiltration is taking place is over on the east side of the site. And there we have terrific soils and conditions to handle the stormwater.
You guys got anything while we're up there?
Let's walk it again, and we have to see the plans. We haven't seen the new plans. So everything we're looking at is with the stormwater basin to the edge of the pond and not, I think it's now in front of the pond, along Underhill, along what, yeah?
Yeah, that's correct. That's going to be a pocket wetland.
Right, which...
Right.
Totally changes the, the look of that as you come through, right? You're going to see a planted basin?
Yes, it's going to be...
Will not, no longer be a lawn in that area.
That's correct.
So we haven't seen it yet.
Correct, but it will become a natural, it eventually, once it grows in, will be a natural looking feature.
But not the same park-like view that you get now?
That's right. That's correct.
Okay.
But that, again, that's in that small area just between the pond and, and Underhill, but it will become a nice feature to the site and a nice natural looking feature.
Okay.
Does anything on wetlands?
No. What else you got?
All right, and I just wanted to touch base on the rec, and you guys have been sitting there so quiet and nice.
I don't follow the rules.
The legal eagles are looking at the code and all the parameters for the project, and projects in town, so we're going to give them time to come back and get us answers, so.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to go back and forth, I'm trying to follow the rules and just, you know, sit and wait my turn.
Roundtable part.
Yeah, if it is the roundtable part, I'll bring it up. So obviously, I disagree with the applicant. The way I read the code, and with the overlay of registration, says that it's, the recreation requirement is as per the R3. And according to my reading of the code, section 300-21, paragraph C dot 3 dot A dot 2, subparagraphe F and G. So F, "At least 400 square feet of usable space is provided on the site for each dwelling unit, for play area and other outdoor living uses. The developer shall provide a suitable improved playground area, play area. Each such playground, play area shall have a minimum of 1,200 square feet and a maximum distance of 1,000 feet." So that basically equates to about, ironically enough, 1.38 acres that is supposed to be for playground area, for recreational facilities. Second paragraph, "In addition to that 400 feet, the developer shall also cite 10% of the site for the provision of a park and/or recreational facilities. If the provision of such facilities is impractical because of the particular layout of the development or for other reasons, a recreational fee of $4,000 per unit shall be submitted prior to the approval of the application." So I, what I have seen so far is a walk, a path around the pond, as far as the recreational amenities that are being added for this development. If there's something else in there that I haven't seen yet, then great. But I will also say that, in response, I'm a little confused, in the response to Mr. Fairland's question, Mr. Tedjeder said that, according to the state, they also have to do part of the state historic requirements to restore the ponds, so I'm not sure how that comes into the recreational facilities. And the last thing I want to say is, the code of the underlay, I read it, and I'm not a legal eagle in any way, shape, or form, I just build really cool stuff for a living. The planning board may modify this requirement due to special circumstances of a particular site. So I read that, that gives you a lot of leeway.
We can modify all of it?
It's the way I read it, is you guys get to modify the recreational requirements for a particular site. So all I'm telling you is that this additional development is going to cause additional strain on already strained park resources. So the assets that we have require the fees to upkeep. So I'm asking the planning board, and I've already asked the town board, please, for all that is good and holy, take that into consideration when you approve this applicant. I think the code supports us. I don't think what the developer is giving you, it may satisfy paragraph F, does not satisfy paragraph J. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, we'll go around the room. Anything else from Conservation? Lynn?
Hi, Rich. I'd like to go back to the elephant in the room.
Density.
Density, okay? And ask Mr. Galero, what are the opportunities for us to reduce the density at that site, okay? So that we can accommodate more of the historic features, because that's what's driving it now. I actually took, I dialed up one of the more prominent restoration architects in Westchester County and showed him the plan, and his immediate reaction to this, to the plan was, wow, this redefines predatory. I called the Westchester County Land Trust and said, is there a possibility for a conservation easement? They said there's no room on the property to do a conservation easement. So I'd like to understand if there are opportunities to reduce the density on this site, working with Mr. Galero and his team, so that more of the historic features of the property could be accommodated.
I don't expect you to be ready to answer that right now, but something to prepare for. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Housing, Ken? Any other questions, thoughts?
No, I'll just provide some of the details first. Respond to the questions that were asked of me that I didn't have the numbers off the top of my head, so I will send those to you.
And we appreciate you stepping up, even though, not that we forgot, but we forgot. So thank you very much. All right, so parts we heard from, anything else? Town board?
Town board.
I want to thank everybody, all the committees, boards, commissions, for the diligence in this, the applicant, our planning directors, our attorneys that are here tonight, and the citizens that have showed up to find out what's going on. I think it's a, a show of town, that people are concerned and people are supportive in the same, in the same breath. And with regard to this project, I think that, that the way we remain transparent is a laudable cause, and a laudable thing that we're going to continue to do, and a laudable thing that I'm sure the applicant, planning board, and planning department is ahead of also. Thank you.
Good? John, as I always ask, we missing anything?
Not tonight.
Got to ask Jim.
Oh, yeah? Jim, I'm afraid to ask Jim sometime. What do you have, anything?
Got to ask Jim.
We've got a lot of, a lot to work to do.
Traffic? Yes.
There we go. So that's, and traffic was near and dear to our hearts from the beginning. I do know that, Joe, I don't know if you can speak to the traffic, but there is a very robust plan in place, and the traffic engineer did a study, and we'll get more into that later, but I think, you know, I live up in Shrove Oak, but I've been purposely getting off it at this exit, and I don't want to use any vulgarities, but that, that intersection there is god awful.
I was going to ask you, why?
It's terrible, and I think in the upcoming meetings, you'll see more about, in more detail about the traffic, but that, I will tell you from the beginning, that was our biggest concern. So I do want to, again, echo the supervisors, thanks to everyone, and we really appreciate the input.
I think the reason we didn't bring the traffic issue up tonight was because it's been extensively studied already, and it appears to our review so far to have satisfactorily addressed the impacts of the traffic on the site. Of course, that's going to be tested, as is everything else when we go through further public hearing. You'll have an opportunity to do that, but it's a long report, it's got a lot of improvements in it that will really, we believe, change the intersection for the, you know, for the better. So it's not an issue that we deem to be incomplete necessarily at this point. I'm not saying that with any finality, but that's probably why we didn't bring it in.
Yeah, and there were, there were three levels of improvements with that intersection, and I know the board is very much pushing the total project, because now that we have this overlay district, there is opportunity for other developments to come in too. And this has to be looked at holistically, right? We don't want to just look at this property and say, well, if, you know, if Uncle Giuseppe's leaves, God help us, and something else goes, and I love that place, something else goes, and, you know, you don't know what could happen. There's change around every corner, but there is the opportunity for that now. We have a hotel proposed, there's been some other developments talked about. We want to make sure that whatever's done at this intersection works, and doesn't just work for here, it works for everybody, because, you know, it's not just going to be potential residents here across the street. That's a main thoroughfare, and that's got to work, and it's so bad now from the study that was done, and the proposal that is being looked at really does make one hell of a difference.
Will it be presented?
It's going to be, yep. Soon, yes. We're working through the EAF now, the draft expanded EAF.
It's been presented, I mean, you can look at the study that we have had up till now on the traffic and look at what they're talking about doing, and if you have comments, you can always write to us, because we make those comments, we get a writing part of each meeting's record, they go in our minutes, and we do consider them. And again, as I, as we have said, there will be another public hearing, at least one more public hearing where you can address these concerns yet again before a final decision is made. We're not done, we're not even close to that point, but we're getting, we're moving forward.
We're basically doing our homework, and, you know, this meeting is to hear from the various boards to kind of help us along that way. So again, thank you all very much. Go ahead, Sergio.
Regarding the traffic, you know, from, from day one, the planning board, that was their absolute, one of their main concerns, and, and the intersection here has been an issue for many, many, many years. It's not even aligned properly when you're trying to make a left turn coming up Underhill to get onto 118. You're kind of like just sitting in... You're kind of like just sitting in the middle of, I don't know where. So the town board is also very concerned, has always been concerned about that, and we've had conversations. I know the supervisor has, I know our councilman has at Lactaman. And the planning board is very concerned about that, and part of the project is to resolve that issue. That's not only a town issue, but mitigate whatever other concerns might happen because of this project. And so, that being said, they are actively pursuing it, and we do have some really good mitigation plans in place that will resolve that, and I think will resolve some of the main concerns of people living right here off Underhill, because it's crazy. The intersection is nuts. So, and the applicant, to be quite honest, is on board and willing to, you know, not only mitigate what their concerns might be, or what their contribution to the traffic to this intersection is, but also go beyond that. And the planning board, you guys have been doing a great job.
No, I think that was our, you know, we're obviously very concerned about the historical end of it. I would say, no disrespect to anybody, that was a close second to the traffic, because if the traffic doesn't work, you know, it's dead in the water. But they've really come up with a good plan, and there'll be more coming out as we go. So again, thank you all very much, appreciate it, and we move from here. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Tom.